Like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Patrick, do I need to read the whole spiel again? I guess I do, don't I? Yes, this meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to Malibu City dot org slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button on the screen. Uh, when the public hearing for that item is open, a speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Um, and Alex, I don't know, did you show that slide again? And while he's doing that, Rebecca, can we take a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Sound on.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza.
Yeah.
Commissioner Whitten.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
May we have an approval of the agenda, please?
I move approve the agenda staff recommended with items three B two. Five B and five C continued to six, two thousand and twenty two.
And a second, anybody? Jeff seconds the uh motion. Roll call.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And a report on the posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August fifth, twenty twenty two.
Great, thank you. So I think that takes us on to, we have no ceremonial presentation, so item two A, general public comment. Uh, items within the planning commission's jurisdiction, do we have any speakers lined up to uh address us? Rebecca.
I'm sorry about that, I'm trying to keep muted, we have uh some staff still in the building because of our start. I am not seeing anyone signed up to speak, um which is new for us. If anyone is present in the meeting and would like to speak under public comment, please indicate so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
Okay, in that case, we're on to item two B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries. Uh, who'd like to go first?
Last week, the uh coastal commission had a. I guess a seminar on coastal rise. And I wondered if staff could uh give us a quick, quick review of anything changed or. Or whatever.
That's a good question, let's, let's hear straight from staff. I see Lauren has her hand up, but Richard, do you want to take that or do you want to pass it to Lauren? Uh, you're muted, Richard.
Still muted.
Still muted.
I know, I know he was having problems with his microphone.
Yeah.
Chair, do you hear me now?
There you are, yes.
Okay, we got it going, new batteries in the microphone and unfortunately I put into the wrong input on the side here. And yes, so this uh staff was present at that and. Uh, I'll let Lauren, if Lauren feels that she can give a, a quick synopsis, but we were going to actually prepare. Uh, a more detailed uh write-up of what happened, but yes, staff was in attendance and Lauren.
So Lauren, let's, I guess let's treat this as a quick bullet point, given that we're gonna hear some more detail at some point soon, right? Hi.
Absolutely, okay. Uh, it was a presentation um by both, um. It, it's all about updating the LCP to incorporate sea level rise, right? All communities that are supposed to update the LCP, their LPs uh to incorporate sea level rise and the new guidance. Um, it was a presentation by some of the local cities about their experience. And uh some really in education and a re- a reporting of the local. Uh, working group on the sea level rise issue to the planning commission about their findings. And um some recommended policies. And the only really new piece of information that I heard was that the Ocean Protection Council is going to update their sea level rise. Predictions next year, and that's it.
And any sense of whether those predictions will be going up or down in terms of number of feet?
Generally speaking, they should be going down because right now. Sea level rise is tracking around one and a half millimeters a year. Over the last twenty, twenty-five years, whereas at this point, if we were on the medium to high risk aversion curve. We should be at six millimeters a year.
Because it's, it's nominally gonna be accelerating, so the acceleration would be greater by now.
Correct.
Okay, alright, now we're getting into too much detail on that, but I, I think that's a good headline.
I tried to keep it to your bullet point.
Yeah, no, that's good, John, did you have a quick follow-up on that?
Just one quick question, is the staff going, heading towards. Putting specific numbers in LCPs?
The coastal staff.
From our viewpoint, w- we are reading the coastal engineering guidelines in a uh in. Uh, coordination with the new code update. And we are not going to quote specific number, we're going to keep more general because I think, and even the coastal commission said this. We need to maintain some flexibility because we're not sure what the best available science. It, it's, it's evolving, right? So if you quote specific numbers, you're locking yourself in and you can't. avail yourself of the best available science.
And I, and Lauren, oh, what I wanted to jump on it, on there to Lauren to, to be extra clear. Uh, was that, so everybody knows Lauren is and other city staff, we're actually working. With the coastal commission engineers on, uh coastal commission on this, so. When we do provide that new change or, or whatever we do to our code, our LCP. It's being done in conjunction with coastal staff, it's not just city staff uh working on their own.
Yes, in fact, we have begged the coastal commission, one of the problems that they face is that they are very short-staffed. And we provided commentary to please, please staff up because. We will need our help and coordination, you know, moving forward, many cities will, not just Malibu.
Okay, alright, great, um, other questions, quick commissioner comments? Thank you, Lauren. Anybody else? I have a few. I guess I, I will start with them then. Um, and, and I guess following this is sort of a similar question. Coastal ruled on short-term rentals, does anybody, maybe Richard, want to give the bullet point on what we're expecting now in terms of any further action? Um, or if this is even ripe for any. Public input at this point, or, or where do we stand in the process now that they denied the uh hosted ordinance?
So, y- y- yes, Chair, as you mentioned, they denied it, uh, we were close, one more vote and that would have changed. Coastal commission staff did recommend denial of the city's hosted ordinance. There was a concern that the hosted aspect of the ordinance would lead. Uh, to a diminished number in visitor uh serving accommodations. And so what we'll be doing, I've spoken to the city manager. Um, we will uh bring something back to the council to get direction. Uh, because yes, our amendment uh is essentially, it's, it's dead, uh, the coastal commission denied it and that. And so the next step would be if it's the council's pleasure, uh, put something together, seek public input and, and try again. Uh, but like I said, we, it was close, it was five-three vote.
And so the, the interim ordinance is still in effect?
Uh, so on that, the coastal commission, for those who watched the uh, the meeting, kept. Making reference that the city is enforcing this current ordinance and we are not. Uh, not until the LCPA or the LCP, the, the amendment is approved. What's in effect right now is our registration, registration requirement. Uh, that anyone who operates a short-term rental uh should be registering with the city for taxation purposes. And uh when we do that, uh, we also look to make certain there are no open code violations on the property. And also that uh there are no complaints on the property uh in general.
John?
Yeah, um, we have an election in a couple of months. Uh, is that projected to change the coastal commission substantially? Do, are we gonna have a new head of the assembly, a new head of the senate? Um, because of termouts, does anybody know?
You're asking about what's happening at the state level.
Right.
Well, they're gonna appoint a new, I assume they, if they're out, they, the new guy gets to appoint new commissioners.
That is, you are correct, Commissioner Mazza, I don't have the exact count, but yes, I expect that come January, we are gonna see new commissioners.
Okay, um, Dennis?
Um, Director Malika, um, if I'm not mistaken, so you're gonna continue to work on the. STR proposal, spend time and that type of thing on this anyway. If I'm not mistaken, one of our council members said they're just gonna sue the coastal commission. So why would you spend time on it? Because when they hears things like that, why in the hell would they want to work with us anyway? Can you answer me that one?
Yeah, so one, i- it's, I'm gonna seek counsel direction if we're supposed to continue working and. Uh, the Chair of the Coastal Commission, I, I watched what she had to say and. Uh, she made it very clear that the city needs to be more of a partner. I think it's a polite way of saying what she said, um, but it all depends on what direction I get from the council. Uh, but not, we're not gonna do this on an independent study project.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, uh, I know Don Schmitz is an expert on this, I know this is a staff thing, but could we get two or three minutes out of him on this?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I was gonna hear from you and see if we had more from the commission first, but uh, we in fact now have an item. To a public speaker, so Don Schmitz, you have three minutes and uh, if you want to take it all, that's fine, if not, that's fine too.
I won't, uh, I won't take that full amount of time, uh, Chair Hill, I just want to point out that in fact. The coastal commissioners, except for the gubernatorial appointees, have fixed terms. Uh, and uh, I do not believe that uh, there will be changes in the commission pursuant to the election. So uh, I think the, the commission disposition is, is what you have. Uh, a tie vote uh would have uh been a denial, we would have had to pick up two additional votes. Um, and so a- as far as a short-term rental issue goes, um, I'll leave that up to, to Richard and, and to you. Uh, to uh, to listen to the exact comments, if you have questions for me in regards to what was said in that regard, I'd be happy to answer them. In uh, in, in regards to the sea level rise issue in the uh, the workshop that uh, John raised. Uh, apologies, uh, the uh, a number of things came out of that, which I think you would find of interest. Uh, I'm running to ground right now, statements from the executive director, Jack Ainsworth. Who stated that the issue of the definition of existing development, which is hugely important. Uh, that uh, this was a matter that was being litigated, uh, and that they were also going through some sort of administrative uh, uh, rule adoption. Uh, and this is the, of course, a very contentious definition, does existing development mean. Houses that were in place in nineteen seventy-seven versus uh, where uh, so many of the cities and counties want to go, which is existing means. Simply that existing, uh, and in regards to the levels of sea level rise, uh, you're asking the right question. Uh, this is obviously something that is uh, again, very important. The high-risk aversion that the coastal commission has been asking in their statewide uh, guidelines for residential development. Is the high-risk aversion, which is five feet, Lauren Doyle, as usual, is scientifically and, and factually correct. We're not seeing anywhere near that much, and uh, I'll conclude with uh, the last takeaway on this, which is. Uh, where cities and counties are going and the coastal commission is beginning to uh articulate support. Is for a tiered response on local coastal program amendments. Let's see what actually happens over the next couple of decades as opposed to locking ourselves into these projections. Uh, which can have very severe implications for the coastal communities.
Okay, just as a point of clarification, Don, how certain are you uh that the commission terms don't change? You said you think that's what's happening? Or you, you're certain?
Pursuance to the Marine Forest Society case, the commissioner's terms were affixed. Uh, to deal with the constitutional concerns over its separation of powers, so the uh, if you, if. A, the speaker uh, or the Senate pro tem cannot remove a commissioner once they've been appointed. And it does raise an interesting question, Craig, whether or not if you get a new speaker or new Senate pro tem, if they then get to put their own appointments in. Uh, and uh, yeah, I guess I need to go back and check that, but otherwise, there is no changes to the commission. Once uh, the legislative commissioners are appointed, they're in there for very specific terms and time.
Alright, great, thank you. Um, alright, I, I still had a couple other points to address now, back to commissioner comments, item two B. We have one consent item which includes a blank acceptance of conditions affidavit, I don't think that's necessarily our concern. But I just wanted to double-check that we don't need to open that item because there's a blank form in it. Richard, or admit, I guess that would be for Richard. I, I raised this because it came up um, in the Smooth Jazz Festival last week or two weeks ago, when, when we raised that. Suddenly, the, the acceptance of conditions form was relevant, and again, we have a blank one here, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Yes, sorry, paranoid about my microphone here, um, yes, and the reason being um, is because we. The Jazz Festival, we had given them that approval, it, you know, I issued it. It's not something that the, the planning commission issues and.
And it was more time-sensitive.
And well, and we had issued, you know, we issued that and there was, we didn't expect the hearing to take place. In the case of the item that we have here, we published this item and gave it and made it. We made it public to both the applicant and also uh, the commission at the same time. So there was no opportunity for them to sign it yet.
Okay.
Hope that, that makes it clear.
Uh, just, just double-checking, as long as it's not a problem, then it's not a problem for me. Um, okay, so my main point is that, that, there's something going on with code enforcement. That I'm not sure what the answer is, I'm not sure even exactly what the problem is. But I have some symptoms here that I want to just point out and kind of air out in the public, um, and maybe this will help. Um, help us hone in on how we can improve the situation, but uh. I guess going in sort of temporal order, we had the Smooth Jazz event a couple of weeks ago. The night before, that Friday night before the Saturday event, somebody reported to me that the website for the promotion of the event. Still was advertising alcohol and contravention of our specific condition that they clean up the website and that not be part of uh, the promotion. And so I sent a note to staff, just alerting you guys to it. Then the neck, and then I didn't hear anything, and so the next day, late afternoon, I sent another note just saying, hey, uh, paraphrasing. Um, never heard anything back, I hope you guys are taking care of this. Does the permit need to be pulled or revoked or something because they're not complying with the condition we imposed? And um, I then learned from subsequently that uh, in fact, they were serving alcohol at the event. Uh, from people who were there, so then days, days later, I got a email from the city manager. That I didn't fully understand, but the gist of it was. Um, hey, what are you calling us out to, to do code enforcement on the weekend? And um, you know, there's just been too much bashing on the stash, staff. About this kind of code enforcement stuff and. You guys kind of have us coming and going because we revoke the permit and then you guys said, you, the commission said. Uh, it's okay to put on the event and now you're complaining about the event, so you know, what, what, what do you want? And I think, I think Mr. McCleary was just frustrated about the situation here, but it sort of pointed out. Um, you know, what, what, what is the code enforcement doing on the weekend then? And then, so that's, that's one. Yesterday, hello?
You froze there for a while.
Yeah. Oh, did, how long?
Not long.
Forty, forty minutes.
Five seconds.
Five seconds, okay, so that, that was one symptom of just like, what happened to code enforcement on that? Secondly, yesterday at Bluffs Park, I'm, I'm in the community softball league and we showed up at, for an. Game earlier than usual, scheduled at eight thirty, we showed up at seven thirty. And the whole park was uh populated with a car event there. And there was no parking anywhere for people coming to the softball game, and so some of the people had to park out on the highway. And uh, there was a city staff person there wi- wearing the T-shirt and I went up to her and I just said very casually, I said, hey, what's going on here? Sort of pointing to the car event, and her response was interesting because it wasn't an explanation of what the event was, it was. Don't worry, that event is totally permitted. It's like, okay, um, not my question, but fine. And I, so I came home and I looked it up and, and there is no report of that in the permit, the weekly permit record, and then I subsequently heard that this car event happens once a month there. It's uh indefinitely unofficially permitted. And yet, it's now was conflicting with another permitted event, namely the softball league. So that seemed like an odd uh loose thread there. And then we just had this thing about hedges on bird view and whether that needs to be, who's gonna be enforcing those? And then finally, we have the dark skies thing coming up with another big can of worms for code and code enforcement when. If they're not working at night and if we can't have residents helping in the enforcement themselves at some level, then that's another big issue, but like. So the broader question is, what exactly is the problem with code enforcement and how do we fix it? Because it just seems like he, everywhere I get little reports about something is not quite what it should be. And can we tighten this up somehow? Richard, what, what, what's your take on where we're at with all this?
Uh, so there was a lot there, let's, let's start with the after hours, so.
Well, uh, but let me just ask this, without necessarily responding to each individual thing. Just taking these as examples of something more systemic, can you synthesize more of a broader? Um, here's where we're at.
Yes, so let, our goal is to have seven-day-a-week code enforcement. The commission councils, they've made that very clear, the council's direction on it, and it's something we'd like to do. However, to do that, I, I need to hire more code enforcement staff. Um, as you know, uh, we've lost quite a few staff members this year. And we, was I think I mentioned at the last meeting, I was supposed to have code enforcement interviews on a Tuesday after a city council meeting. Uh, those guys didn't show up, both of them, so we're doing another round of interviews, that's, that is coming up. Uh, ideally, we'll get to that later this month, later this month, uh, we'll do that, but we are working to get. A seven-day-a-week response, however, some of the items that you mentioned there are not code enforcement items. That is, one of the, the misleading issues in the city is, uh, for example, film permits do not fall under the planning department. Um, that is handled by the, the film permitting office, which is in the city manager's department. Uh, would you speak of uh, the cars and coffee and softball league? That's not a, a code enforcement matter, uh, that's something that would be appropriate to bring up. With the um, community services de- department, because they are the ones that host. That, that cars and coffee in the Landen Center parking lot and then also handle the, the ball fields. And then when it comes to the Jazz Festival, um, on that one. Um, you know, I, I don't know what more to say, what more anybody could want, because we had three city staff members. Uh, present at the festival. And with that, um, you know. The complaint about the website, I did look into, the website did not use the word alcohol. It, and actually, it was something I brought up with, uh, I think Pat, who's here, I think he was on the call with me earlier that day when I called, actually before the. Public commented, I was a few hours earlier than them, um, the, the event promoter used the term bar. And when we called him on it, he said, I'm not using the word alcohol and it's a non-alcoholic bar. Now, did the guy misrepresent that in how he was doing his advertising? I agree, if I see the word bar, I'm gonna think it's alcohol in his mind, and we have this confirmed in writing from him. It was a non-alcoholic bar, and that is why we had staff at the event to enforce that and. If he would have used the word alcohol, we could have followed up on it, um, but he did not. And um, I checked Pat, well, uh, your city attorney, we all looked at it and we, you know, we've made sure that we weren't compliance with it. So I, I understand the frustration with folks um, on it, but staff does follow up. And if I have more staff, believe me, there'll be more follow-up, um, but the best thing to do after hours because. Uh, you know, it, it happened to be a fluke that I saw your email on that Saturday afternoon, I usually don't work on a Saturday afternoon. Uh, but both the community services director and I, we both worked that afternoon. And I, you know, I, and I know you and I spoke, you uh, you did acknowledge that you got a response from me, I understand. Um, that perhaps there was some confusion there with the city manager and. I, I have not followed up with him on that to, to let him know of your concern, because unfortunately, the week before last, he was on vacation. And then when he came back, I, I went on vacation.
Right.
I know that there was, I know there needs to be some follow-up there and I'll, I'll be sure to do it, but with code enforcement, we are. You know, we are responding and we, I also made certain that our code enforcement hotline is available for folks on the website. It's under, um, oh shoot, I forgot the term, I want to say it's important number, so it's got nine-one-one fire department, PC, or police officers. And then it does have our code enforcement hotline, which does get checked on weekends. And if there is a big weekend event, we do reorganize our staff to be out there. Um, but ideally, I'm gonna be able to pick up a couple more code enforcement officers. Um, I am gonna bring up the issue of dark skies enforcement, I'm hoping that we can find some sort of consultant. That has a, a skill level, a skill set, because um, I do think it's a bit more complicated than just. Turning the lights off at eleven o'clock or eleven thirty, I forget which it, who it is. Um, but there is, there are some concerns about light trespass and it would be nice to make sure that whoever gets those calls. Is somebody who can go out there with a light meter, which we do own a light meter. Uh, we just need to get it calibrated again every so often, uh, but go out there with a, a light meter and actually, you know, be useful. And not just go out there and say, yeah, I saw a light on, uh, that does, I don't think any of us any good. They need to be able to follow up on the trespass issue as well, so we are doing our best to be there, but like I said, there's. Um, other folks in the city too that we have to work with, and like I said, cars and coffee and the softball event completely agree. It seems like that was overtaxing the site. And uh, uh, but that is something I can bring up with uh, the uh, community services development director. And then like I said, if we can uh fulfill these, get some folks to uh, take these other positions. Uh, then my goal actually is, we're gonna try a program where essentially we have uh, each officer working four ten-hour days. And that way, we can stagger schedules and get seven-day-a-week, uh, ten-hours-a-day code enforcement uh, presence in the city.
Great, uh.
I, I, I just want to quickly follow up on, on the, on the Jazz Fest issue, I, I, I don't want to kind of beat a dead horse, but they did.
Can I just interject? I, I don't necessarily need a whole big post-mortem on that either.
Okay.
Maybe there's a few loose threads there and people have been on vacation, et cetera, but um. We can, we can discuss some of that offline, I guess, uh, but it, it's encouraging to hear that you are getting more people and it does sound like that would. Would go a long way towards resolving things and also to remind staff and the public or anybody that. I, I wrote up a plan for how we could do some of the enforcement on the dark sky that the, the public could participate in. Um, it's in the document I submitted to the council, sort of halfway through that document, there's a section that's specifically on enforcement. We, we can talk about that offline again, but Patrick, did you, do you still need to add something on that?
No, chair.
Okay. All right, Dennis?
Well, we're talking about dark skies, you know, I was, Commissioner Maza and myself agreed, Pat Healy. Wow, we all three agree on this one. We, I think that I think the, the service station people are a bunch of whiners. And as far as I'm concerned, the, the station that's at the corner of Webway, that's the Chevron state, state, whatever Chevron. That, that looked good. Director Malika told me that they had jumped in and done that and, and got the lights turned down. Looks great. The people out my way are out here at the West End, Commissioner Wetton and I got this way. These guys, I don't know what they're whining about, just, just change out the lighting for God's sakes. But they, they got a pass and I, I didn't agree with that one. I, you know, most time I'm pretty on board with everything that everybody's trying to get done, but I'm not happy about this one. Those guys, those guys should have been made to change those bulbs, no, no doubt about it. So that's it for me. Thank you.
I, I think Richard wants to reply to that maybe.
Oh, I'm going to double check for you, Commissioner Smith. But I, I don't believe they've put in yet what they were asking to do. I, I know what service station you're talking about. I think that thing has been a pain since Joyce was the director. I believe she got them to at least put shields on some of the lights, if I'm not mistaken. But I do think, I mean, this, I mean, that's what, ten years ago? But I do think Joyce did, did try to do something there. But let me have a talk with, I don't see Tyler on our call anymore since his item's off. But I don't think the plans that Tyler was working on and had Mr. Benya review. I don't think those plans have been installed, the, the stuff on those plans has been installed on the, on that station yet. I'll find them for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any other commissioner comments for item two B? Seeing no hands, that brings us on and we've adopted.
Chair Hill, could I?
Yeah, yeah. Staff report.
So I wanted to say, just on a follow up to, to what you said about the coastal commissioners. It looks like we possibly five, three for sure. On the website there, I saw that three of the, three of them are listed as an end of term in May of twenty-three. And two of them serve at the will of the, the governor's office. I, I forget exactly. So it's a possibility of up to five changing over based on the coastal commission website. And I also wanted to say, in addition, the last two weeks to the coastal commission hearing, staff was also present at MRCAs hearing. And the MR, the reason for that is primarily is that they were considering, I don't recall, i- if this, I don't know if this commission recalls. But you guys had heard Richard Weintraub, his project at three, 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 eight, six and nine, eight PCH, the two houses that looked the same. There basically was a three lots and they were going to split the middle lot down the middle, give it to each other property and then build two houses that are fairly close to each other. On that particular property, the MRCA was discussing an op, a offer by Mr. Weintraub and, and the other partner to allow a license agreement for visitors of MRCA to be able to utilize the four foot wide easement on the east end of the property to get to the beach. So I, and the reason why I bring that up is that if anybody's watching who, who is concerned, I want folks to know that Doug did contact the owners representative twice. And, and did this in writing as well to make sure they understand that any work out there, they need to come to the city first to make certain that they don't need a coastal development permit or some sort of approval for it. And I've also asked Doug to step up the patrols in that area so that if we see them installing a gate or something like that, we, we can jump right on that. So I do want folks to know that we are following the MRCA agendas. And we are watching it and I'm doing my best I can with code enforcement. MRCA, I'm sure as this commission knows, had a interesting relationship with them, but I want people to know that we do instruct them that they need to speak with us and we do our best to follow. That concludes my comments.
And I, I'll just add a, a piece of news on the back of that one, that I spoke with the owner of one of the two private properties over which that easement would go. And this matter is, is subject to litigation. The concern there is that their own deed language limits it to expressly not a public easement. So I think that's what they're, the, the battle's going to be about up there. All right. So with that, we have, we're past the consent calendar and we're now on to new public hearings. Item five A. This is at three, one, two, two, four Broad Beach Road.
We're on, we're on consent calendar, aren't we?
Yeah, three B one.
It's, it's a receive and file and Craig indicated he wasn't interested in, in pulling it if somebody else wants to pull it, that's a different story.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, for some reason I was under the impression that there was nothing to pull, but go ahead and who's, who's got something they need to.
I'm not going to pull it, I thought we had to receive it. If we, will we receive it?
Maybe, I'm rushing here a little bit, my own biases kind of interceded. Okay, so we need to re, re, receive and file. Three B one. Do we need a vote on that?
Receive and file.
Received and filed and three B two. Anybody else?
That's, we didn't, we, that does require a motion and I'll move it. Staff recommendation. Or I think we already did it in the, in John's motion.
That, that, that was my thought, that in the approval of the agenda, we, we already did that, that was.
That part was, three B two was addressed in approval of the agenda. So then three B one, you're approving by consensus? Receiving entirely by consensus?
Yes. Yes, I don't understand why we would not, why we would have treated them differently in the approval of the agenda, but maybe that's irrelevant now.
It is, because staff recommended it, that's why we did it.
Okay. All right. And in that case, now finally, by popular demand, we are on to item five A. Coastal Development Permit Amendment Number twenty-two dash zero, zero, three. An application to amend coastal development permit number fourteen dash zero, five, one for the construction of a shoring wall to protect existing development on adjacent lots during construction of a previously approved single family residence. And this would be planner, how, how do you pronounce your, your last name, Adam?
Pizarkowicz.
Pizarkowicz, okay. That, okay, this is a staff report, please, from planner Pizarkowicz.
Okay, thank you, Chair and Commission members, good evening. As noted, Coastal Development Permit Amendment twenty-two dash zero, zero, three at three, one, two, two, four Broad Beach Road. Next slide, please. So here's just a quick view of the aerial map. The residence in the satellite image has since been demolished. But this is just a quick view of the property itself. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the project is proposing the construction of a shoring wall to protect existing development on adjacent lots during construction of a previously approved single family residence. And the applicant is proposing to utilize soldier pile, soldier piles and wood lagging as their shoring method. Next slide, please. So just a bit of project history in terms of how we got here. So September fifth, the planning commission approved this, the single family residence and two-story single family residence and the demolition of the existing one. And then on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the existing single family residence and conventional foundations were demolished. And the inspection was signed off by the city building and safety. But upon completion of demolition, it was discovered and documented that both the east and west neighbors retaining walls were not structurally engineered or supported incompetent bearing material. So the applicant structural engineer and geotechnical engineer determined that if the walls were not supported, they would likely fail during the construction of the previously approved residence. So the applicant's team began putting together a shoring plan to ensure the neighboring walls would not fail during the construction of the new foundation and structure. Next slide, please. So the applicant submitted a shoring plan and it was approved by building and safety. But then just a few days later, the coastal commission notified the planning department that the shoring plan must be processed as an amendment to the previously approved coastal development permit. Next slide, please. So here's just a view of the subject property. The, as, as noted, the structure's since been demolished. And you can see the neighboring retaining walls on the east and west side of the lots. Next slide. Here's just a quick look overview of the shoring plan with the beach side of the lot on the left side of the screen. And the proposed soldier piles circled in red on the right side of the screen. Next slide, please. And here's just a quick look at the elevation, looking north, you can see the piles and the lagging in between. So that would be facing a lot similar to the image that we, the picture that we just looked at of the lot, same, looking at the same direction. Next slide, please. So just to quickly go over the project alternatives, this is detailed in the staff report. But as mentioned, if this were not to occur, the neighboring retaining walls would likely fail during the construction of the new foundation and the new residence. As one alternative, C camp piles could be used, but that would require additional materials to be abandoned in earth and additional drilling, which would lead to more noise. And another alternative was utilizing crushed rock in lieu of concrete in the toes of the piles. But this would also require, require additional drilling in the site and the removal process would likely create vibrations that could damage neighboring properties and also leave behind voids in the earth that could remain and potentially render the site less stable. So they've gone with the proposed amendment of using soldier piles and wood lagging. The soldier piles can be abandoned in place. And the use of concrete pile toes requires less drilling into the site than driven piles or piles filled with crushed rock. So this method requires least amount of vibration and site disturbance compared to the alternative methods. Next slide, please. So in summary, the staff recommends the planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with Sequoia and approves the proposed project as conditioned.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Disclosures, please. John? Jeff?
I had a telephone conversation with Lynn Heacock last week, but no substantive information that's, that's other than what's reported in the staff report.
Mark?
I spoke with Lynn Hecox also last week. Nothing, yeah, nothing significant or anything different that's in the staff report. I've just visited the site and visually you know, oriented myself to the site.
Dennis?
I spoke to Mr. Hecox about the shoring piles and I guess I have a comment, but I guess I'll wait till we all get going, so thank you.
And I had email with Lynn. I asked him a couple of questions, he answered. I think it's all within the scope of what's in the staff report. I'll ask another, I'll ask a question about it, so if, if, if it wasn't, then, then that'll come out. I also, in sort of deciding whether I needed to drive all the way up there to look at it, I, I took a quick look on Google Street View to see what I could discern and kind of understand the site a little bit better. Decided I didn't actually need to visit, but I also noticed on the street view image, there is a promotional sign on the front of the lot. I don't know if it's still there or, or gone, but it advertised a link, a web link to a prospectus for what's happening on the site.
Whoops.
Add a pool and spa that aren't there now. And so that'll, we can address that question, whether there's any interaction with the, with that or with the I guess after we hear all the, the applicant and if there are any public comments. So with that, let's turn to the applicant and I, I'm sure we've got, John?
Just a quick question about Adam. Do either properties on either side have anything to do with this? Is anything happening on their property or, or because their walls are substandard, are they involved in this process?
They are not involved in this process. I believe everything is within the property lines of the subject property.
Thank you.
Presumably the, the property owners know what's going on here and have been notified though, right?
They, they would have received the notification of this and the notice of application is up on the site as well.
Okay, well, we can talk about it in, in, in discussion. But let's hear from the applicant first. I'm assuming that would be Lynn Hecox wants to speak and, and anybody who's got on his team.
We will be beginning with Lynn Hecox. While the applicant team is presenting, if there's anyone present in the meeting who also wishes to provide public comment, please indicate so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And then with that, we'll return to Lynn Hecox.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Lynn, I think you know the drill, fifteen minutes, you can reserve whatever you want, et cetera. You there? We don't hear you yet.
He's muted.
Are you muted?
Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
We can hear you now, thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lynn Hecox and all my contact information is on, on file. Commissioners, the shoring project that you have before you is a first. Never has the planning commission, or actually the California Coastal Commission, approved a shoring plan for a single family home. So a shoring plan is generally incidental to the building permit. In our case, we have a building permit for the house, a building permit for all the improvements. And we have a building permit for the shoring that we're proposing, you're, we're proposing today. That shoring was approved by the city back in February. And the planning staff discussed it with the California Coastal Commission. And they requested that we file an application for an amendment to our application, to our original approval. So we filed an emergency permit application and planning staff rejected that emergency permit. So we converted that to a, a coastal permit and amendment to amendment to, up, to amend our coastal permit. So here we are tonight, this is the first. And I do have a few comments, I'd like to introduce three people tonight that I've invited to be here with me, because this is a new type of a project. And they've all signed in. Rebecca, do you have their names? I'm going to give you the names, make sure they're signed in, please. The first is our contractor, Jen's Host. He's the president of Host Brothers, Inc. The second party that's in attendance is our structural engineer, Marshall Mead. He is a structural engineer with DJ Scheffler, Inc. And DJ Scheffler, all they do is design and build foundations and shoring walls. The last party in attendance is Mr. Mark Barrett. He's a certified engineering geologist. He's a principal geologist for Geo Concepts, Inc. And if you have any questions that I can't answer, and I probably can't, they will be available to answer. I just have a few comments and I'm going to leave it open to your questions. The first one is, the proposed shoring will not change any of the, 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 the design or footprint of our approved residence. The second one is a little bit more important, it was brought to my attention by the chairman. And the chairman emailed me, he says, Lynn, when you're digging these piles, doesn't the shoring generate more grading? And I said, Mr. Chairman, it does generate more grading and I misspoke on my emails to the commissioners. I basically stated that the grading would not change. I should have stated that the exempt grading would not change. The, or excuse me, not the exempt change, will not change, but the exempt, the exempt grading will not change. Nor will the non-exempt grading change as a result of our project. The shoring will add fifty point three cubic yards of exempt cut. So the approved residence had one hundred and thirteen point seven cubic yards of exempt cut. Now we have a hundred and sixty-four cubic yards of exempt cut. But the non-exempt grading has not changed. That non-exempt grading was originally, let me just check my numbers here. We had non-exempt cut of ninety-eight cubic yards and non-exempt fill of a hundred and thirty-seven point seven cubic yards. But our shoring will add fifty point three cubic yards of exempt cut. Our shoring does not require any variances and that's always a good sign. The shoring is consistent with the local coastal program, it's consistent with the Malibu municipal code and it's consistent with the building codes. And as I indicated to begin with, we have building permits for this house. And we had, we pulled building permits and for the shoring back in February. And we were ready to do the shoring next. Uh, next month after the appeal period is over, after September fifteenth. And we'd appreciate, we'd appreciate your approval tonight. Lastly, staff has determined, and thank you very much, Adam, for your staff report and your recommendations. Staff has determined that the shoring that we're proposing is the least environmentally damaging alternative. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes uh my brief comments. If you have any questions, you can ask me or you can ask our geologist, Mark Barrett. Our contractor, Jen's Holt, or our structural engineer, Mr. Marshall Mead. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hecox, that you have ten and a half minutes remaining. If you need to rebut anyone, Rebecca, do we have any public uh who want to address this?
We do not have any public um who have indicated the desire to speak on the topic. And then I do also want to remind the commission that we do have Lauren Doyle um available from our in-house staff. Um, to provide answers to commissioner questions as well.
Okay, great. And with that, uh, we bring it back up to the commission table and I see John has the first hand up. What do you say, John?
Uh, just a couple of technical questions. Um. Will this be exempt from the uh grading season? It's great, but. It's not gonna slide or whatever. Is it exempt or do they have to wait until March or whatever it is? That's a staff question.
Yes. Adam, I believe that this this doesn't prevent, or excuse me, present any Esha issue. On the grading, so they would be able to start their grading right away and and continue.
Okay, and this is for the city attorney. Uh, we got a letter from the MRCA from their their uh. Attorney wanting saying certain language was missing from the staff report. Can we add that at this meeting? Because this is coming from their attorney. We don't want to have another meeting just to put the same words back in if if it is okay with Mr. Uh, the owner to put this language in there.
Sure, Commissioner Moss, I want to be sure that I'm looking at or at least um referencing the same letter. Communication that you are.
It's twelve.
And and that's one that they reference the easement, whether there's a lateral easement or not?
Yeah, and some other, some other kind of weird language.
You know, I mean, I I I didn't see any. Anything like that in the resolution. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm mistaken there, then yes, I guess if it's in the resolution, we could potentially. You know, I wouldn't say state one way or the other. I would just clean it up. We're we're not a. Court of law, we're not here to to ascertain and dictate.
If the applicant wanted us to, could we add it to the resolution?
Sure, if the if the applicant was agreeable and said, yes, that is fine, I I would have no objection, but we do not want to be in the business of adjudicating or stating what is or is not.
Right, I just didn't want to hold it up for some lawsuit.
Well, and before before recognizing Dennis, just to follow that, I, one of my questions was the the noticing there was no debt of dedication of the lateral access. And I just wondered how significant is that in this context here? Do the, do the other houses, do the neighboring houses have it? Do we? It seems like, why wouldn't you do it? But um. I I don't know that I appreciate the significance at this particular site. Maybe that's. Richard.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's towards me. I mean, I I I can't speak to the existence of of easements on on the neighboring properties.
I think that's for Richard.
Yes, what I can, I can try to do for the commission, I don't know how long it's gonna take me. Um, but there is a map of lateral access. I mean, it's it's old, uh, but it's in our LCP. Uh, but I could, I could look at this property and the properties adjacent to it and see if there's anything directly adjacent. Uh, don't mind doing that. It all might take me a moment, uh, but I could do that in the background as you guys are talking.
That might be helpful. Dennis, uh, do you want to ask your question now or do you want me to ask the applicant how they feel about the lateral access easement?
You can ask him.
Can can we get uh Lynn back on here, please? And just uh, Lynn, what what's your direction from the owner? And if if it hasn't been dedicated, why?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I recall on the nature of the single family home. We had a unanimous approval. I don't think that included a lateral access condition. And I'm not sure staff discussed the lateral access condition. At one point in time, they were not imposing those conditions on projects. And this project is part of the G Had, the Geological Hazard Abatement District. And everybody has a retaining wall. It seemed to me that the California Coastal Commission has already obtained lateral public access. Seaword order of the Rock Revetment. That has always been my understanding.
I think, I I think. Jeff may be able to clarify here. Jeff?
Yeah, um, is it, I thought we have covered this many, many times. We don't extract lateral access or other public access uh from uh projects. Unless the project itself has some sort of impact that affects, reduces things like that uh of of public access. So if the if the applicant wants to donate it, fine, but uh, we do not extract uh these uh write-ups.
Right, John?
Yeah, I that I don't think that's what they're asking for. What they're saying is the staff report did not report a lateral access. And that they have a title report saying there is a lateral access. It says, yet there is a lateral public access easement on this this property. Staff report page, blah, 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 blah. And then title report, blah, 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 blah. Um, so I think all they're saying is that. The staff report says there isn't one, there is one. It should be in the staff report and I don't know if it has been the resolution, but uh, it's not there for one. They're claiming there already is one.
If if there is one and we don't say that there is one, that has absolutely zero impact on anything. Um, if they're, if they have an easement, they have an easement. Uh, if they have an easement, nothing that we say in a staff report has any impact whatsoever.
And and just to clarify what what Lynn said a minute ago, it sounds like this wasn't even on the table when the original application came through. So it's not that they have affirmatively denied wanting the easement. It was just never addressed. So.
I know, but but Craig, what I'm saying is they're not asking for an easement. But we get a letter from a lawyer saying you shall recognize the easement.
Yeah.
Already exists. I'm not a lawyer, but. When they send their special counsel to send you a letter and there's nothing wrong with it. Um, I don't see stirring up a hornet's nest, but that's, I think our attorney should read that. First pair, second pair, first paragraph on page two.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Moss, Moss, yes, I mean, there is no, our staff report, our resolution will not change that one way or the other. I am not fearful of of any potential lawsuit from from any easement holder saying, hey, your staff report should have said that. As 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 Commissioner Jennings said, if i- if we get it wrong in the staff report, that doesn't affect the legality of the easement one way or the other.
Okay.
That was generating out.
John, just Richard, what was your comment?
Certainly, so according to the LCP's uh, public access maps. There is no access on this property on the LCP map. And I am, there are no, uh, there, there's no access either um up coast. Or when I say this, talking about the adjacent properties, the adjacent properties up coast and down coast don't offer access uh per that map. Uh, you'd have to go a couple of properties and then you. You're, there's some properties there with lateral access. This is about six properties to the north of a vertical access. Uh, what I am wondering is perhaps if MRCA is mistaken. In that they're referring a future easement that could be part of the the Broad Beach Gad project when that permit is finalized. Uh, cause I believe that as part of the Rock Revetment Project, as was discussed here a bit earlier by the commissioners. Um, the coastal commission, of course, wants to make sure that seaward of those rocks, uh, they're public access. And so this may be a comment towards the the potential or or future. Uh, once that permit is finalized by the coastal commission.
Okay, Rebecca, are you on this point?
Um, I just wanted as a point of clarification, it's possible that the letter he, Commissioner Moss was referencing, um, that was. Sent out today to the commission, uh, that was in regards to item one B in the special meeting rather than this this application.
Okay, I got you.
Oh, okay, well, so what we're hearing from Richard, though, the the the. The map is old. There may be more recent easements, but it sounds like nonetheless. What we're doing tonight here is expressly not addressing the easement. And if there is or isn't, that's a legal matter that can be addressed uh when it becomes ripe. Um, so I think we can kind of put that issue to bed for the moment and we can go back to Dennis who's had his hand up for a long time.
Okay, Mr. Passarkowitz, I I've got a question. In your staff report on February seventeenth. You state that, or whoever wrote staff report, I'm guessing you did, you state that the coastal commission. Uh, wanted them to pull a permit for the shoring plan now. The way that's written, does that mean somebody in a boat on the coastal commission just happened to ride by and decide that? Gee, they need a shoring plan on that. Or did someone from staff call them and start this horrible situation when they already had permits?
Uh, my understanding is that uh coastal commission staff contacted the the planning department. Um, I was told.
And how would, and how would they do that? How would they do that? Unless somebody called them. Am I correct in that?
Uh, I'm not aware of the the genesis of their their call on on that aspect of it. I'm I'm not sure if Richard can speak to that at all.
I am, I'm not aware of how they came to the knowledge, you know, how they, if it was their enforcement staff. I do know, and perhaps this is where Adrian can better help us, because I think um he might have been more involved in that than me, but. Adrian, do you have a answer for that one?
Yeah, Adrian, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I do have an answer for that. I was uh listening in the background here. So um, we we contacted coastal staff because uh we were asking for their input on this particular uh application as. As uh Lynn Hecox mentioned, um, we don't have um. You know, examples of how this has been dealt with in the past. Uh, this was, this was unique um in that. It is a beachfront property. It is construction on the beach and it wasn't considered with the original application. So. Um, they originally came to us with an, with a an emergency coastal development permit. And um, you know, we we wanted to um, you know, with a an emergency coastal development permit. Um, it implies that there will be a follow-up CDP and so we needed to um. Uh, verify whether a CDP was going to be required in this case. And so we 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 set out uh. Um, some some input from the coastal, from coastal staff.
So they've got permits. They want to move forward. And you've never done this before, because you've never felt like you had to before. And then all of a sudden, we've decided to do this. I mean. Jeez, you know, as soon as you call those people, then it all falls apart and there's no history of having a problem. Before that you feel like you'd have to call them about the shoring plan. So can you help me with that?
Well, um, yes, um, we don't have a history of this coming up in the past on the beachfront property. I think that's unique to this project. I'm sure um we've had. Um, you know, some some shoring um done in projects in the past. And um, you know, but not on beachfront properties. And so we needed to find out. Um, again, given the uniqueness of this project and again, not that. I know Lynn said that, you know, we have been allowing this in the past as part of the normal process of applications. I don't know that to be the case. Um, um, you know, these applications, um, um, you know, have not been coming to the planning department since I've been with the city. And so this is the first time we've, we've dealt with something like this in my, uh, you know, in in my uh time. Um, you know, Richard can uh speak to his experience with this. And so um, we we weren't sure on how to deal with it, to be honest with you. And um, we thought that uh, as new development on the beach, uh, we could not find an exemption. If there was one, we were seeking for assistance.
And I think the important part to to point out here, Adrian, of what I've seen. When we look at these, because we've looked at some other shoring plans uh with um EST staff, is that. The the concern on for us, the red flags, as I understand it. Is when we see a shoring plan where the shoring is going to be seaward of the seawall. So that's further seaward than what was considered by this commission. And if, and this is the other catch, that development's going to become permanent. And the the plan is just to abandon it in place and not pull it out once construction is done. Um, if someone's doing something, you know, we've kind of always worked under the uh the understanding that. When you're building something, you temporarily have to shore things up and that, and it's temporary. It's there and it's gone. Um, the case here is that when shoring becomes permanent, uh, how do you handle that? And this was a, perhaps these just weren't coming to us under the previous building official. Um, but when we saw something like this, uh, that we were being asked to permit a structure that would be permanent, not just temporary.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mark?
Yeah, so perhaps this uh would be for the applicant uh staff. And and that is uh, from my understanding, the soldier piles are going to be abandoned. Once the project is completed. They'll be, I guess, capped off at grade or whatever. Uh, in in looking at the site, uh, my question is, is what's going to happen after that? Are the, is there any plan for a a wall or fence that abuts the neighbors? Um, it looks like there's some excavation where it's kind of the sites being graded kind of below. The neighbors on either side. So I I can see the need for the shoring, but it just begs the question, what what, how about after that? It is, is just the fact that those piles are going to be in the ground good enough, you know, to permanently take care of. Any kind of uh instability, I guess you'd say. And that could be for Lynn or any of his uh staff.
I'm unmuted, Doc Commissioner. The backup on the piles, on the shoring piles, first of all. The shoring pit piles are sufficiently landward that they are out of the wave uprush zone, completely out of the wave uprush zone. And the way the project is graded right now, that's because of our our contractor. When they demolished the home, they saw the grade on the project being significantly modified. Where there was a depression in the middle of the lot where the, with the two-story house existed. And he immediately noted that there was high walls on either side of the property. And they got the structural engineer involved and the geologist involved and they both said you need a shoring plan immediately. Otherwise, some of these projects are going to fail. And what the contractor did before he left the site. He bulldozed all the dirt to the heat, to the extent possible, up to and buttressed the adjacent walls to prevent them from falling. Because the last thing we want to do is create a problem. Um, regarding the piles themselves, they're going to be cut off down five feet below grade. Uh, they're going to be between the house and the wall. We have a five-foot side yard setback. The walls are probably within two to three feet or probably centered between our setback and the existing walls on both the east and west side. And the walls are going to certainly stay on the north side to both help support the bluff. However, our retaining wall will encompass that area. Our wall, our specific wall that we're building to retain the bluff and build the house will encompass that part of the retaining wall. But we are going to keep a wall below grade and it is outside of the wave uprush zone. We'll have level areas around it. Nobody will see it. It will not affect anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, other questions? I have a few questions. Jeff?
Yeah, I I wanted to follow up uh on on the, on Mark's question. Lynn, what? In what way will the finished project help to stabilize those uh adjacent uh walls? Once you, once you cut off the soldier piles and and all the rest of that stuff, is there going to be any support? Or is it necessary that they have support? Or is it their job to to provide the support? Which seems to me that uh, if you're doing excavating there, you might have a responsibility to provide support. Um, but that's my question.
Well, the support for the adjacent houses were from the sub, from the substrate that's there now, that's sand and dirt. And it was leaning against the existing house and foundation. Our house and foundation is going to be also down below grade. And we've got like a six-foot uh vault below our garage. And the grades that we, the grades that we. And the grades that we, the grades that we start install will definitely continue to support the wall that was there previously. It would not change, nothing will change. It's only the fact that we're drilling right now. We're drilling holes for our foundation. And drilling holes, six foot, I mean, three foot diameter holes for the foundation and twenty-four inch and thirty inch holes for the shoring. And everything will be put back in place. The adjacent wall shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'd like to follow with a, I, I have a couple of questions, but seemingly related to this is I. Is the original geology approval deficient in not having identified this situation in the first place? Or what, why? Doesn't seem like this is a particularly unique situation. We've got houses all up and down that beach. Why wasn't this something that was caught out at the beginning? Or is there something unique about this that, that? Um, I, I'm not sure how to phrase the question exactly, but we had an approval and then suddenly it's like, whoa, no, hang on, that's not going to work. Um, Lauren's got her hand up, maybe she can.
That would be the person.
Yeah. What do you say, Lauren? Why, what, how, why, why was this a surprise?
Um, actually, it wasn't a surprise. Uh, what was a surprise was the request. To have this be reviewed in planning by uh Coastal Commission. If you looked at the original plans and sections, you could see that in order to construct what they needed. But they were going to propose to construct there, you would have always needed shoring.
Yeah.
Always. Shoring was always going to be needed there to construct the back slope, right, across the lot. What I think perhaps wasn't anticipated. Um, until they got out there and actually excavated and demoed the house. So they could see what was there was exactly where the neighbors' walls, the bottom of their walls were, right? I, I, I honestly think it's a precautionary thing and it's good because you don't want it. And also too typically, this is not handled in planning. This is typically handled as a first submittal in building and safety, right? Once you get the building permit, the next thing always happens is the shoring, right? But given sea level rise and the change in the scrutiny in coastal engineering. Um, I don't disagree that it was probably a good precaution to take a closer look at this. And just make sure that they weren't going to put anything there that would remain as a barrier, right? But there's always going to be a vertical wall at the back of that house at about the same location and maybe just a foot or two elevation above the bottom of the shoring. So I think what's happened is changing standards. And so one of the first things when Richard and Adrian introduced us to um the new planning staff, right? And one of the things at the beginning of the year that we talked about as Adrian identified this issue and everything is. Now we, if there's going to be temporary shoring on a beachfront property. We identified that and put that in the planning project. So it's identified as a scope of work right up front. And everybody's looking at it in planning and it doesn't get left to building and safety kind of as a cleanup item.
That speaks to basically what I was wondering about. What? Yeah, yeah, good. Um, okay, this is a question for, for uh commissioners mainly. I think that it looks to me like we're, we're discussing building walls, retaining walls in effect uh that are thirty-two feet tall. And we're going to cut off part of it at the end, but we're still leaving a tall retaining wall sort of in the ground. Um, is this in any way a concern about precedent? Um, when we're talking about heights, limits on retaining walls, does that or does that not apply to shoring walls? Um, what, are, are, are we in the same ballpark with these things? Or are we talking about horses of two different colors? John?
Well, I, as I understand it, this is underground.
Yeah.
Measure our retaining walls above ground. So it's apples and oranges. Uh, we have retaining laws that probably are much higher than six feet if you go below ground and figure out where the footing is.
So this is more in the nature of the uh forty, fifty-foot pilings that we allow at, at times. It's, we're not calling it a wall.
But we measure above ground.
Okay, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to make sure, double-check that we're not setting any precedence inadvertently. Uh, another, like, maybe this might be my last question. And this is for Lynn or, 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 or Adam, I, I guess. I don't see any, the plan of what was approved before, so I'm not sure what, where everything's going on the site here. But given that the sales pitch advertised on the billboard at the front of the site talks about a future pool and spa. Where does that go on the site? Is that out by the ocean? Or is, is there any way that this site here is somehow interacting with that future pool? And where, where uh this is in preparation for the pool? What, what, what's the, is there any potential interaction with a future pool here? Maybe Lynn can just tell us where that pool is going to go.
I had to unmute, Chairman. I apologize. The pool in Jacuzzi has been part of our project and it is on the seaward side of the house, but it, it complies with all the string line requirements.
So it, it just, I, I just double checking, not seeing where it was. It, it, this is in no way related to that. I, I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
A question on that.
Go on. Yeah.
Lynn, how are you going to build it? If you're going to build a house in front of it, are you going to? I mean, this is just a theoretical question. You're going to have to enter from the ocean side and get a permit for uh, from the coastal for.
Actually, commissioners, the foundation for the house, the pilings, the slabs and so forth. Are all part of the pool and everything else. It's all together. It's been engineered all as one. We've been through plant check. It's not going to be a new project. These are the items that have already been planned checked.
And, and approved with the CDP?
I'll say again.
And approved with the CDP?
They were on the CDP, yes.
Okay, so Craig's question is answered. They're already.
It's already approved.
Already in process.
So there, there, there was something weird about the publicity stuff then, talking about uh here's, there, there is a house plan and there's going to be a pool plan in the future. All right. Jeff?
I'm going to move the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. All right, any further discussion? No? River, hold your peace. Hearing none. Um, Rebecca, call the roll, please.
I looked down for a moment. Could, um, I just confirm that Mark Whitten was the seconder on that?
John was.
John was. Thank you. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that's how we do it.
Can I move, we adjourn? Isn't that, isn't that it for the evening?
That is it.
Is it?
Then I move, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
And Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
I'll just say Lynn He Cox has his hand up. This is not formal business. Can we acknowledge him or are we done?
Just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We appreciate your time and attention.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Um, all right, good night, everybody.
Aloha, till we meet again.
We'll see you uh in September.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye, everybody.